This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, before I introduce you to our amazing speakers, let me quickly introduce EDWPN to you. For those of you who are new to the European Women Payments Network, EDWPN is a network in fintech, cards, payments, banking and financial services in Europe. Over the years, we have built a very strong community in Europe and realized how powerful it could be if we would utilize this community to also make change and for the greater good. And that is how the idea of our campaign to make a call to action to the financial services industry to actively combat modern day slavery and human trafficking came about. Modern day slavery and human trafficking constitutes the third largest crime industry in the world, behind drug dealing and arms trafficking. We want to raise awareness and highlight what actions are needed to tackle this global issue. And this town hall meeting is part of this campaign. We want to show the financial industry that there are practical steps they can take and should take to play their part in battling modern day slavery and human trafficking. For more information or to contact us, you can go to our website, edwpn.eu. Let me move forward and introduce the speakers to you. Ruth, first of all, would you do the honor of introducing yourself?
I will. Hello, everybody. I'm Ruth Durnley. I'm the chief executive of Stop the Traffic.
Great, thank you. And our next speaker, Lily, could you please introduce yourself?
Good morning, everyone. I'm Lily Gilimerova. I had Transactremont Investigations Team at Commerzbank. And my background is investigations due diligence and financial crime. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, Hannah?
Hi, good morning, everyone, and a very happy Thanksgiving to all our American colleagues and friends. I'm Hannah Quinn, and I am leading the Red Flag Accelerator product out of Red Compass.
Great, thanks so much. So, one of the things that we would like to understand is, let me just get a little bit of an... Before we go into the keynote, we would like to understand your current expertise in modern day slavery and human trafficking. So, we would like to ask you to go back to slido.com. Let me just double check and make sure that the question is live. So, we actually have seen that we have quite a few number of people that are working for an electronic money institution or a payment institution. Welcome, everybody. We have also some consultants and quite a variety of backgrounds, also from a law enforcement body or regulator or otherwise involved in fighting modern day slavery or human trafficking. So, let me just put this next one. Okay, as you should see, the next question, what is your experience in combating modern day slavery and human trafficking? If you could just share with us very quickly what your experience is, it would be really good for us to know your background also when we're delivering this chat. Okay, great, thanks so much. We have already some results. About 30% of the crowd so far is experienced. A majority slightly experienced and a smaller group has no experience. So, we will keep that in mind while we'll go through the questions and the panel discussion. I am now going to give the floor to Ruth.
Great. So now's the most scary moment for me ever, which is, can I share my screen? Have you given me the power?
Let me give you the power.
Give me the power. Great. So, everybody who ever knows me, and I hope we all be friends in this now, is, I am not a technologist. But I hope you can see that. Can you see it?
Yes.
Yes, I hope the whole world online is shouting yes. So, I'm going to... I hope that you can see a slide saying, "Building a world where people are not bought and sold." And that's what I've dedicated the last 15 years of my life. My name's Ruth Durnley. I come to you because you could all teach me so much more about money and about financial services. But I hope to share a little bit of the journey that I've been on around stopping the traffic. And in doing that, I'm going to share a bit of the history, the story. And so, I hope that part of this will just open our eyes again to the imagination we all need to try and combat this complex crime. In many ways, it's a data picture. It's human tragedy. It's human endeavor. And we're looking for a world that can change. Although this story is about money, ultimately, it's about a world where millions of people who today are enslaved or who today are going to make a choice, that they are given the information that means they're empowered to make a different choice. So, we have a changed environment. Human trafficking, what is it? It's a very long definition. It hasn't really got any shorter. Lots of people are interpreting it, so I've just put it up there because that is the original Palermo Protocol. But a few facts that you might not know of. And forgive me that a couple of the end are UK. I'm based in London, although Stop the Traffic is global. But I thought just bring it down to a smaller place as well. And these are all estimates. Because ultimately, we don't know. We only count what we see. We only make estimates because we have to guess. 40.3 million. When I started Stop the Traffic 15 years ago, the estimate was around 20 million, 23, 28, 30, 33, 38, and now it's 40.3. What we do know is it's going up. It's the fastest growing crime in the world. That is still a fact. Purely because, as I've just said, we keep seeing this increase as we uncover it. There are many different expressions of trafficking. Nobody gets up in the morning and says, "I'm going to be a people trafficker and I'm going to specialize in organ harvesting." Trafficking and traffickers and the criminal networks get up to make money. And the diversification of the product is why it's so successful. I can take a drug and I can inject it once. I can take a bullet and I can shoot it once. But I can take a person and I can use them again and again and again. I can diversify. I can put them on a street corner. I can put them behind a closed door. I can take them to a factory. I can harvest organs. This product is the most versatile that we've got in order to create criminal profit. And yet, all those large numbers, all those millions, they represent a truly wonderful human being with a story. So, this is Ada's story. And it's a story, I'm sure, alongside many, many others that all of you have heard. But let's remember Ada as we come back to her. How does Stop the Traffic, in its 15 years, see trafficking? So, pull right back out from Ada to the system. Because that's what we have to keep doing. Focus back into the human individual, pull back out to the global network. Stop the Traffic's understanding of trafficking is it's an inheritance economy. It is only done because it makes profit, which is why your network, you, are so key to the leading and change of this crime. And it relies on three things. It relies on its ability to recruit. At the moment, minimum, we guess around 8 million people a year needed to feed into the system to enable it to sustain the size and profit that it has. And it does that really easily. Money, it needs to push its money around the system. It needs to be able to enable that money to flow. Again, we're back into the systems that you are all a part of. How do we see it? Who do we lend to? And then the demand, which again, we're all a part of. We shop it, we buy it, we eat it, we clothe ourselves in it. The demand is high, and we're all part of creating that, which ultimately says the risk is very low to the trafficker. Stop the Traffic's vision in 2005 was to stop the traffic. I have to tell you, often people say to me, "What did your first five-year strategy look like, Ruth?" Well, I have to tell you, it was a late-night conversation over a very nice glass of wine, which is after a very long day of meetings. And isn't it funny when those conversations are the conversations that shape your life? And it was when someone said to me, "This is what we should do." And little did I think 15 years later, I'd have the privilege of standing and talking to all of you. But the journey of Stop the Traffic, as you can see, has pulled us into engaging with technology all the way through, as we began to realize this was about the need for intelligence, the need for data, the need to be able to understand what we couldn't see. Because at the moment, my friends, we can't see it. Though there's so many wonderful people being active now, but we are all working in separate places. So, we launched an app, and I'll show you a bit of that later. And we launched an intelligence-led center, partnered with IBM. And that has extended into launching Traffic Analysis Hub, which is a sharing-at-scale platform that is really a very exciting initiative that Stop the Traffic created as a sister organization that Hannah, and you'll hear later, Lily, are a part of. There's the app. Could we create a tool that sits in anyone's hands to the nine-year-old in a township today in London, in Cambodia? To the child, the woman, the man on the move coming out of Syria? A mobile sits in the world's hands. It's increasing tenfold every year. How can we utilize and empower them to collect, share stories of what is happening safely? And then we need to bring those stories together, which is what Traffic Analysis Hub does, across financial, business, government, law enforcement, civil society, NGOs, communities, faith networks. The dream that Stop the Traffic has been building is that we need to pull that information together because we've all got something really special to say. We've all our stories in different forms, and we need to find a way of being able to see it because we need to share to a greater extent than the traffickers share and they share. Our values are important to us. And our model of collaboration is because it ultimately, the sweet spot of when we can have the greatest impact is when we can pull our collaboration across all the sectors. Because trafficking works as a complex crime across the whole of society. So, we need to find ways of bringing that data, collect, analyze it so that we can understand the insights of what it's saying, and then radically share it for every stakeholder so that with that insight, they can turn that into action in their field, in their geography, in their sector, in their community, so that we are a network of networks, all fed by the same insight. So, here's our model. We look at the supply and the demand side. The supply side, the recruitment side, Stop the Traffic with its collect, analyze, and then share with its insight from its data. And the data that we have collected in the last years through sharing, through open source, through the Stop app and through TA Hub. We then target that to undermine recruitment zones, to look at those vulnerable communities and work with them using geolocated campaigns, using Facebook platform and others. Facebook has been a great partner, giving us ad credits, where we can scale a communication, build a collegiate partnership across all actors in that community, and empower people with insight as real time as we can. And then on the right, we work with businesses and the financial sector because we're wanting to look where the demand and exploitation happens. And so, you can see the system fed by the network, fed by the data. I have to tell you, I didn't draw this because it's far too clever for me. But this wonderful shows how the importance of survivor stories, the importance of those who have been on the journey or are on the journey, how do we liberate and give amplification to those stories by turning them into data? A survivor's story only belongs to one person, the survivor. And I know the power of survivors who want their story to have an impact. And I believe through technology, it's their stories that are actually the most powerful fuel when put into technology that is going to lead us. And they lead us out of it. We have had independent evaluations done on our work. I just say that because, don't take my word for it, do go and have a look. And this was really important to me, everybody, because I think often there's too much anecdote, there's too much maybe. And actually, again, we need to bring evidence and impact and measurement to what we're doing, which we can do together. And it's hard to measure prevention. It's hard to measure what didn't happen. But ultimately, we need to get to source. We will not rescue our way out of this crime. We will not prosecute our way out of this crime. As Desmond Tutu, one of my heroes, said, "We can't just pull people out of the river. We've got to get upstream and stop people jumping in." So, there's back to Ada's story. A very powerful story of an amazing young woman I met. But if you start to look at this and start to pull out what the data is and actually begin to see for people how you take out from a human story and create a million data points and then turn it into action. So, for recruitment, imagine 100, 200, 300 aiders where those stories that are collected then go in, collect, analyze, and then share. And here is a recruitment campaign that we ran recently during COVID with Latin American women working in the cleaning industry, who we knew through our data, through the intelligence and insight, had an increased risk of labor exploitation. And so, we ran this. And the powerful story of Raquel at the bottom. If I knew this when I was a regular, I would have looked before and not suffered five years of being exploited. We've reached nearly 8 million now, people in the last few years with these campaigns. How else can that data be told? So, Ada's story turns into a message on a phone. That's how these campaigns are run. And that message looks like my street. It looks like me. It looks like my community. It belongs to me. I recognize it. And it empowers me and gives me something to do. This is not about doing to people, but doing with them. Here's an example of how the data turns into information. A business we've worked with over five years now. And a really good example of a leader in the field of wanting, as a business, whip bread. It's British. And then from their supply chain, so multinational hotel and restaurant company, they employ 50,000 people. That's 50,000 leaders of change. And their supply chains go into thousands of vulnerable communities. What a potential to be able to lead and pioneer. And there's the money. So, we are working with Santander. At the moment, we work with a number of banks. And Traffic Analysis Hub has a growing number of global banks engaging in looking at sharing data. But we've been looking very specifically, working in geolocated campaign up in Lincolnshire, where the bank worked with us. So, this isn't siloed working. This is systemic. You, as a financial leader, can lead in prevention at every aspect, from recruitment, the money, and the demand. We work with many partners. I only put this up because we can't do what we do without trusted partnerships. And I do believe, everybody, that your network is such an example of both the hunger and the necessity of how we need to build a new world. I am not interested in Stop the Traffic being the biggest engine because I won't achieve anything that way. It's about how do we build a network of networks? How do I empower you to be better at what you do? How do you support me? And it means going across every aspect of society. So, what is it at the moment that we're tackling? Look at the challenges that we face. The global pandemic. And yet, this is an opportunity in the world with the global pandemic, where the world is realizing how much we need each other, how much we are one world, how much data matters, how the only way we can get out of this is by collecting, analyzing, and sharing information. Cyber capability, you all will know so much more about this than me. But although there is a threat through the challenge of crime using cyber capability, we need to be better. It also offers a fantastic opportunity. People on the move, the gift of a globalized world where people can travel, search, dreams can come true. This is both, yes, a challenge, but it is something that is offering us a massive opportunity to enable people to move safely. We have got broken systems, many of them. But interestingly, it is broken systems that actually give us opportunity again because we can reshape them. And then finally, business change. I said to young people I was speaking to the other day, "It has been a hard year, hasn't it, for all of us?" But I said, "Interestingly, it's often in those times that we reshape and reimagine things in a whole new way." There's never been a time where business can change fast, where things can be reimagined, where we can build a future or a world that is different to what we did in 2019, where we don't compete, where we don't fragment data, where we can utilize ways of bringing things together. So, for me, my passion and my commitment for the next decade is to convene, is to bring and replicate what you're doing over and over again around roundtables. I always say roundtables are the best, even virtually, because they don't have any hard edge except the edge of pioneering. We need to convene together so that we can converge our resources, our data. There are too many small organizations fighting each other, competing for funding. If you're in the not-for-profit, this is not about all becoming one. This isn't about losing your identity. This is about bringing stories and what we have together so that we can understand the insight from the richer picture so that we can go away and be the best of who we can be. The best payment service, the best financial organization, the best policy tank, the best NGO, or collection of them in one region, the best hotel chain. Because unless we scale, we will not disrupt trafficking. Unless we use artificial augmented intelligence and that technology that starts to point us to where the future is, where's the best point to go, where's the hotspot, where's the route, where are the maps and places that we can go to enable us to disrupt the financial model and the business, organized business of trafficking? Then we'll always be catching up. But actually, I'm really excited. You can't stop what you can't see. But when you can see it, you can stop it. And so, I am privileged to join you all. I am so excited that the PowerPoint worked. And I'm now going to hand back and look forward to the panel and your questions and learning from you as well. So, thanks ever so much for having me.
Thank you so much, Ruth, for sharing your story. Thank you, everyone. We're going to start our panel session and share some practical insights and begin answering some questions. As a reminder, you can submit questions through the questions panel in your add-on the control panel. Before we move forward, just go, please go back to slido.com and answer the next question. It would be interesting to hear from you whether you think your company could be impacted by modern day slavery and human trafficking. We have already received some results. Quite a divided group, about 30% says no, about 30% also says, "I'm not really sure." And a smaller group also says that they feel that they are impacted, that they know how. And some, 50%, know that they're impacted, but they're not sure how. Great, thank you so much. I think it's interesting for our speakers to know before we kick off our panel. So, let's start off the panel. If you could, could we kick it off with you, Lily? I'm really curious to hear from you on the current status of the industry. Do you see any progress in terms of how the financial services industry addresses modern day slavery and trafficking risk?
Thanks very much, Nadia. And thanks very much, Ruth, for a very insightful and very interesting talk on the slavery topic. And I'd say the reality is that for the finance industry, obligations rising from the Modern Slavery Act must be considered in the context of anti-money laundering legislation. And Ruth alluded to that. Slavery is a particular offense to money laundering if it generates an economic benefit. And so, the finance industry must not see its anti-slavery obligations as just being limited to publishing a statement. The finance industry must vet its business partners and suppliers, but also ensure consistency between that process and the process of client due diligence. Client Due Diligence, KWC, in the context of AML, has always aimed at preventing, detecting crime, including slavery. But what the Modern Slavery Act has achieved, I would say, is that it puts pressure on big business, including financial institutions and banks in particular, to make their anti-slavery effort public, which of course attracts consequently scrutiny from consumers, from shareholders, the media, audit, and regulators. So, I would say the difference between slavery and other types of offenses is that actually, banks have to publish a statement. And so, inevitably, all your processes from business partner, suppliers, to clients' due diligence will be scrutinized holistically. And it's very difficult to neatly divide between these different work streams, which is why it's appropriate and necessary to recognize that the slavery topic requires a consolidated approach across the different parts of a banking institution. I would say that it's probably fair to say that some banks are better than others. And I have read studies about the level of awareness in the finance industry, within banks in particular. So, it does vary, as it seems. But I think there has been a significant progress achieved in the past few years. And the level of awareness is now a lot higher. And we can see this from Modern Slavery Act statements. And some do indicate how banks, financial institutions are taking a proactive approach, looking at, for instance, lending... are taking a proactive approach, looking at, for instance, lending deals, looking at ways of engaging with clients and business partners and suppliers and educating them and helping them remediate issues. So I would say definitely there has been a progress in this, in this sense.
Yeah. Hannah, what are you seeing? Any additional thoughts on this?
No, I think Lily's covered that really well, actually. I think what we're seeing is that the industry is really coming behind the issue of modern slavery, human trafficking. Both, if you look at the Modern Slavery Act, which is looking at the public sector generally, as well as looking at the financial services industry. And we can't forget that modern banks are detecting modern slavery, which is happening in our societies. And so we need everybody to come behind modern slavery.
Yeah. And following that, and I think that's also something Ruth mentioned during her keynote. Ruth, maybe you can answer, you know, the obvious question that we have here. Where do you see the biggest gap that's currently lacking, which would bring the most value to the fight against modern slavery and human trafficking?
Gosh, what a fantastic question. I always say, we're always going to get further if we ask the right questions. Yeah, because we often spend the time asking, I think, not answering, but if we can find the one thing. Now, everybody wants the one thing. Okay, when I've, when I've met people, let's say, in the financial sector, they would love an algorithm that boom, could just show all the areas of risk. A business saying, just tell me where my risk is. Tell me where it is and then I'll go and fight it. Law enforcement, who are the, who are the ones to arrest? Tell me the four names. Yeah? The truth of this is, although what we're sharing is not one thing, there's not one thing. But I'll tell you one thing I believe is a game changer, and that is sharing our stories, sharing our information. Billions of transaction data. And yet, in that data, in that transaction data, you can't see enough to see how the trafficking model and business is working. Businesses hold loads of procurement data, financial data, but they can't see enough. NGOs hold precious data. Survivors hold gold. But we need to bring that together. Because if we can share that, which is what we're doing in Traffic Analysis Hub, what's stopped the traffic? If we can do that, then actually, I believe that will change everybody's world. Because it won't be perfect. But in this world, probably nothing is. But we will have a game changer of how then we can stop what we can see.
Great. Hannah, what would you like to add to this? If anything?
Sorry, guys, I'm really struggling here with my camera not turning on. I'm so, so sorry for that. I think, I think as Ruth said, data is key. And for us, and it is really the key to solving the crime of modern slavery, human trafficking. Each individual red flag that we see that detects a suspicious activity is nothing on its own. And it's only when we can group these detection together that we can really build the scenarios in which we can start to uncover the crime itself. And so we believe collaboration is key in order for banks to be able to share more data together and also for the industry to be able to share the insights of the patterns and the behaviours that they're seeing. And that was the motivation behind the Red Flag Accelerator for us at Red Compass.
Lily, do you have any additional thoughts here?
Well, I would say that we probably still unfortunately hear compliance officers saying that anti-slavery legislation is not quite the same as the corporate offences of failure to prevent bribery or tax evasion. But I do think that the UK authorities and authorities in other countries are increasing their attention. And we're already hearing about businesses having to file statements with the government-run reporting service. So we can expect that there will be benchmarking and further scrutiny. On the 22nd of September, the UK government publishes its response to the 2019 consultation on the strengthening of section 54 of the Modern Slavery Act. And I think it is particularly notable that the government is committing to make the section stronger. And we will potentially see, see this as matters that need to be addressed in an organisation statement on a mandatory basis, as opposed to voluntarily following available guidance. And I think that's a significant, significant change.
Nadia, can I just add something to that? Because Lily sparked a fantastic thought. You see, if we can see it, it means we're, we're basically building transparency. We're basically saying that if we shine a light on this, it becomes what was hidden becomes seen. And the more transparent something becomes, also that is the more mandate that you can't hide it. And I'm not just talking about the traffickers. Yeah? So the system can't hide it. It's, if in 2021, you're a business that says, I'm not interested in mapping my supply chains because it doesn't matter. You can't do that anymore. You'll have to. You have to know where your money's going. You have to know what your statement you're writing. You have to be able to back it up. You can't just write it and say it doesn't matter, no one's going to notice. And we've got a world that's going to see. So sight is really powerful, carrot and stick. And I think the changes Lily's powerfully said, look, the Modern Slavery Act in 2015 in the UK, the business supply chain piece for us, that's the bit we led on because it's the bit we felt equipped to do. But that is now migrating globally into different places and taking on its own version. As we said around bribery and corruption, it's got some way to go. Regulation is increasing, but it's still not the answer. Activity, light, and action. And who's going to be first? In a good competitive world, don't be left behind. Be a leader.
And I think we also got a comment from a participant about this. And she really recommended support and help to the victims and survivors and encouraging them and telling them that they don't have to be shy and that they should speak up, right? And I think Ruth, that really resonates with you.
Absolutely. You know, I have met thousands of amazing people, actually, who serve on the ground in communities, those who have been victims and are survivors, and the journey that they walk with people. That's imperative. Absolutely, that resource goes into that. I'm just calling and saying the stories of their journey, of how the money works. It's not just about my name is and I got trafficked. They hold incredible data. And I don't, we've enabled that to be unlocked. But remember, the final thing is people only share with who they trust. So at the bottom of everything we're talking about, do we trust the facts? Do we trust the evidence? Do we trust who we share our data with? We need to really rebuild in our world quite a lot of that, which is why I think those of us who are all of us leading anti-trafficking human right work, that's exactly what we're doing. We're building trust between all those who play a part in stopping it.
Thank you. Now that you've heard this, let's go back to the participants and ask another question through Slido. If you could go back and answer the question on whether you feel your company is sufficiently aware of its risks in relation to modern slavery and human trafficking? We have some voting coming in. So far, most of the votes go to yes. They feel that they are sufficiently aware, which is great news. There is about 30% that's partially aware of the risk and about 10% is not aware. Hannah, what do you feel about these results?
Yeah, obviously, it's disappointing for people to be unaware of the scale of modern slavery, human trafficking. It affects 40 million people in the world. And I think a lot of people think that it's the problem of maybe more developing nations, where we know, for instance, in the UK, 136,000 people are enslaved today. So, you know, and for financial institutions and individuals working in financial institutions to not be actively looking to detect the signs, that is obviously also incredibly disappointing. But what we are seeing in our engagement with the network, again, like Ruth has saying, is that people are really coming together and people are really looking for ways in which they can engage and collaborate together. And that is really, really encouraging. And so I believe that we are going to see huge change in the next five years. We're all moving in the right direction. And there will be new ways to detect modern slavery, human trafficking for banks, that make it accessible for all banks. And I think that's something that I think is really important that Ruth is also highlighting, is that a rising tide is what we're looking for here. It's not, it's not success if only the top banks in our world can effectively detect modern slavery, human trafficking. We need to build accessible tools and solutions that can support every type of bank if we want to, if we want to support the most vulnerable financially in our society as well. And so it's really important that we build solutions for everybody operating in the financial services system.
Yeah, great. Well, I think it's time to take the discussion further and get some actionable insights. Participants, feel free to submit your questions as well. In the meantime, Lily, let me ask you this. What value do you believe the newest legislative changes of the sixth AML directive will bring in the effort to combat modern-day slavery? Especially given the fact that now human trafficking is explicitly referenced as criminal activity that is utilised to launder money?
Thanks, Nadia. So in the UK, we have the all-crimes approach, which means any criminal conduct which generates economic benefits is a predicate offence to money laundering. But I think introducing such legislative changes internationally will help, will help ensure consistency internationally across different jurisdictions and aligned countries that have an all-crimes approach to countries that have a list-based approach to AML predicate offences. So I definitely think there is, there is value in this.
Yeah, great. And Hannah, maybe you can tell me a little bit more about the efforts at Red Compass, because you have been working very hard on an open source tool called Red Flag Accelerator. Can you tell us more and perhaps share a scenario for which you have developed an indicator?
Yes, absolutely. So the Red Flag Accelerator is something that we're incredibly proud of. And it's now recognised as the leading resource for global banks looking to understand how to detect the signs of modern slavery, human trafficking. It documents 184 of the known red flags, which we refer to as indicators. And it groups these indicators to form the top 20 MSHT scenarios. And this has all been done in a way that banks can understand how to apply them and where to see them in their data. And our commitment to the Red Flag Accelerator is to ensure that it's kept up to date and that it reflects the threat and behaviours of modern slavery as they present themselves currently, not historically. And so that, with that in mind, we've just released a new version of the Red Flag Accelerator, which incorporates two new scenarios that reflect the behaviours that have emerged during the COVID period. So if you think about how COVID has disrupted our personal lives and our business lives, it's had the same level of disruption to perpetrators of modern slavery, human trafficking, who profit from the crime. Because we can't forget that this is a business and a very profitable business. So the higher demand for domestic modern slavery has been one of the key attributes of COVID to fulfil roles that would have been previously fulfilled perhaps by migrant workers or to create some of the high-demand goods that emerged, such as PPE. And we've seen other instances of increased online sexual exploitation globally as well due to the restrictive movement of people. And so what we do with the Red Flag Accelerator is we break those patterns down into stories and we pinpoint how that story plays out within our banking sector and across the multiple layers of infrastructure that the banks hold. So as we see the majority of us, customers of the financial services sector, with reduced fuel costs, with limited hotel travel, with reduced taxi travel, it would be unusual to find these being detected for other personal customers and business expenditures. Equally, businesses that operate in high-risk sectors should not be receiving customer funds. That would be the beauty salons, the nightclubs, and the car washes. And so we've created two new scenarios to reflect the trends associated with COVID across enabled labour exploitation trend and uncovered sexual exploitation pattern. And so what we're doing is we're looking to collate behavioural, industry, and payment and bring all of that together to detect unique patterns.
Yeah. Great, thank you for sharing that, Hannah. Lily, from your perspective, in the private sector, the scale of keeping pace with the existing regulatory requirements is enormous. The volume of SAR reports is a key indicator of this. What needs to happen to ensure that financial institutions are and can focus on the risks and the right outcomes, not the technical reporting?
Thanks, Nadia. Yes, indeed, there is a lot of pressure on financial institutions. But I do think that banks have a role to play in the fight against slavery. And there are things that can be done easily. And that's, that's in terms of getting it right when it comes to solid onboarding, KWC, and due diligence, as well as ongoing due diligence and transaction monitoring processes in the vast onboarding space. A risk assessment is absolutely vital. And Hannah touched upon this. It's vital and it is key, a key to, key to this is assessing industry risk. The industries that entail manual, intensive manual labour tend to be higher risk from a slavery perspective. That would be fishing, farming, construction, entertainment, hospitality, and so on. We also need to consider the enablers. We're talking about real estate, letting agents, recruitment agents, transportation companies potentially being used for the purposes of slavery and trafficking. Businesses must also assess the geography risk. And we're not just talking about jurisdictional risk. We're looking at where the supply chain is located. Focus should be, as you said, not just about jurisdictions, but also about high-risk regions, local hotspots. An industry and country risk assessment should then also be factored into the client's risk rating in automated transaction monitoring systems. We should also consider the level of scrutiny a business is under and what mitigation there is. For instance, if we're looking at a business partner supplier or client, have they published the Modern Slavery Act statement if they, if they meet those criteria? And what does their statement say about their anti-slavery effort? And it is also vital that the media screening parameters are broad enough to include issues concerning labour practices. The next important point is to consider whether the issues the financial institutions identify actually result in a governance process. If we file a suspicious activity report, what do we do afterwards? How do we, do we consider terminating the relationship? Or enhancing the controls while maintaining the relationship? And I would say there is a fine balance here to achieve. But where the client is generally bona fide a business, as opposed to trafficking front, it may be worthwhile educating the client on how to remediate the issues rather than straightforward taking the decision to off-board. Introducing anti-slavery clauses into contracts, slavery-focused questions into client onboarding questionnaires, anti-slavery questions into your due diligence processes and governance committee reviews. That's all, that's all important and achievable. And I would also say the finance, the finance industry should up its game on technology. And, and as both Ruth and Hannah highlighted, it's vital. And I would say it still remains a question to what degree financial institutions are consistent and good and able to identify red flag indicators. and, and good and able to identify red flag indicators such as classic replicious um um shared contact details, address, telephone numbers, um shared occupational references. Um how, how good are we at identifying those replicious? And, and have we considered technology and innovation?
Yeah, I would definitely, I would definitely agree with what Lily um has said there at the end, Nadia, in that, um you know, the work that we, that we've done with the Red Flag Accelerator, which is our commitment to levelling the global playing field, is that not every organisation is exposed to the same level of awareness of modern slavery, human trafficking. I think even the poll that we've done today has highlighted that. Um and it's about creating a facility in which banks can share their insights and their experiences of how they've effectively detected the patterns. And that's incredibly important if we're, you know, only by sharing the information will we really start from a level playing field and from that we can accelerate forward. Um and so we have some work to do, even just to make sure that every bank is aware of the top twenty scenarios associated and the behaviours of modern slavery that fall within that.
Yeah, thank you, Hannah. Um let's, let's go over some questions from the audience. Um there is a specific question for Ruth. Uh the criminals of these people, they are highly educated and the criminal world is also innovating and creating new ways as well. What needs to happen for law enforcement, NGOs and victims to stay ahead of this? What can we do as an industry?
Gosh, another great question. I've got to tell you, these are the best questions I've ever had. This must be a women's network. Oh, sorry. No, it's men as well, isn't it? Um uh do you know, such a great question. The key that you've said is innovation. So what I learned in my journey with remarkable people is when technology innovates or there's new um discoveries, often criminality uses it efficiently before any of us. So, you know, uh I, I had a fantastic, very senior law enforcement uh person who actually leads Traffic Analysis Hub, who once told me when the car was invented, criminals knew how to use it far faster than the police. So we're behind. How do we get ahead? And I think it's both two things. First, it is technology. That's what I meant with AI, the augmented intelligence that we can use, being able to predict where in the world due to active factors happening, which is data-led, climate change, migration. There are, you know, our world is not siloed. We are not just looking at human trafficking in isolation of all the other issues. The journey and path of someone reaching the point at which their traffic is one of, often could be a long road of exploitation and we can all walk that road. Um and, and it can be where we're vulnerable and what interception points we can find to stop it happening. And so our learning around the data, we're back to the data, aren't we? If we can understand how people are um that recruitment tactics of a certain region uh within a community and we can turn that back into the community so they are empowered to spot the signs and make the changes themselves, there becomes a different organic process. Not about people running around the world rescuing people. And I mean by that, let me come and tell you my truth so that you can be like me. It's actually using the collection of data and understanding and democratising what we know so that it becomes the power for choice and change ahead of the traffickers working. So there's the chat. That's what we've got to do. That's my chat. That, that's what I feel we've got to do. But I'm encouraged and I'll tell you why, because Lily, um I have to call Lily out on this because I met Lily about twelve years ago and she was one of the first people within Stop the Traffic. We wrote the very first Red Flags Manual. What an old name that is. Is that sounds like a financial name, doesn't it? A Red Flags Manual. I, I had nothing to do with it apart from to provide coffee because I wasn't clever enough to do it. But Lily and other people volunteered for years and we formed something called Finance Against Trafficking and it was the first of its sort, everybody. No one had done anything like that before. And now here we are, twelve years later, and Hannah's explaining a Red Flag Accelerator. And we're talking about Traffic Analysis Hub, which is bringing all these partners together. So are we making progress? Absolutely. Are we running fast enough? No. Because actually, we need to run together. We need to carry each other. That's the key. Is actually a, a change in our, and, and how we operate because we have to get ahead. We have to get ahead. Um so I'm excited, encouraged, celebrate where we've come from and look ahead because your questioner is absolutely right. We've got to predict. Technology, not Hannah.
And, and, and going back on what you said about spotting the behaviour and, and making sure that victims, potential victims are aware, I think also from another perspective uh and relating to the question from the audience on training within financial institutions and making sure that they are able to spot the activity. Um there's a question from the audience on whether or not financial institutions include markers for um human trafficking in their mandatory AML training? And how can the financial institutions ensure that the required personnel is well-trained on, on these markers? Lily, can you respond within one minute because we're running out of time?
I, I would definitely say um that I would see, I would see banks doing this more and more um giving prominence to the slavery topic and including this as part of their mandatory training, internal training. Absolutely. I think it's, it's worthwhile and it's necessary. Yes.
And Nadia, just to say that any bank who would like access to the Red Flag Accelerator report, we, we give that, that's a commitment that we make to the industry and uh it's not a commercial product. And we can also provide training on how they can implement it within their organisation. So please reach out to us. Um we're, we're here to level the playing field.
Great. Yeah, so um I'm afraid we can talk for hours uh about this and um luckily, this is not going to be our last town hall meeting about the subject. Um we have a number of efforts that are part of this campaign. Um so please have a look, go to our website um and sign up to the campaign. If you haven't read the, the white paper that launched this campaign yet, please download it on the website that you see, see on the screen. If you have any questions, uh some of your questions, if you weren't answered during this panel discussion, feel free to submit them to callforaction@ewpn.eu. Um and I think the panelists have really emphasised collaboration and data is crucial. And that's why EWPN and Red Compass are offering you uh support wherever we can in establishing collaboration. Peer groups, um uh engagement with regulators, law enforcement agencies, reach out to us on the website and we will try to help uh make a change here. Thank you so much, Ruth, Lily and Hannah, and thank you everyone for attending today's town hall meeting and your participation. We are anticipating to organise a few more, so please follow our social media channels or sign up on the website uh to stay up to date. I want to say, give a special thanks to the Red Compass team, who has been EWPN's partner in crime, if I may say so, throughout this campaign from the start and who has dedicated many hours uh from their team. And you really, really have been of incredible value in our campaign efforts. On behalf of EWPN and Red Compass, thank you for joining us today. Have a great rest of your day. You will receive the recording soon in your email. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Nadia. Thank you, Ruth. Thank you, Lily.
Thank you. I'm with you.
We're actually, I see a question here um on whether law enforcement can see the Red Flag Accelerator report. Or maybe that's something we should follow up on.
You're muted. Great. Sorry, that would be great. Do you have that person's contact details?
No, um.